Work time. I'm glad it was for this week.
All right, it's six o'clock, so we're gonna start our December first, two thousand twenty-five select board meeting. I can't believe it's December today either. All right, I'd like to start with warrants. I'd like to make a motion that we accept payroll number forty-five for two thousand sixty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Call in favor.
Hi.
I'd like to move that we accept pay accounts payable number forty-six for eighty-two thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and forty cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor.
All right.
And the reason that is so high is um actually wanted to pay all the service organizations, uh organizations like uh the library, um all the service organizations that we um have approved.
Yeah, they're all locked together in the warrant under one section.
Yeah. Yeah. Um it also includes some of the the um plow contract, the plow contract, and there were some issues where um where Ashley had sent out bills and actually the bills um they were paid to escrow, and so um she had to take care of those as well. So that's why it's a little bit higher this year or this week. All right, I'd like to move that we accept payroll number forty-seven for two thousand sixty-six dollars and seventy-one cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor.
Hi.
And lastly, I'd like to make a move that we accept accounts payable number forty-eight for eleven thousand four hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents. Do I have a second?
Okay.
All in favor.
Hi.
All right. I'd like to move that we accept the minutes for uh November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five select board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor.
All right.
All right. Now somewhere we have that.
My answer, I've minutes online because I couldn't find them from last meeting.
They go online once they're approved, so there's a little lag, yeah.
Okay.
It was the shortest meeting ever. I think it was six minutes.
Well, just so you know, for overwriting the paper that he goes, this is the first meeting. There hasn't been any citizens at the medical business.
So you're here.
So we're back.
Wrote that good.
Paper?
Yes, they did.
I did not see this week's um.
That's terrible.
Thank you for that, Charlotte.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were hoping that it it would be quick because we didn't see any issues and we weren't anticipating normally, you know, we all look to see what's what's in our uh inbox that comes to us or any issues we've gotten phone calls about or whatever. Also, we generally know ahead of time.
And it's been very quiet, probably because it was the holiday.
Yes, it was nice. Yes, yes. All right, so next on the list is citizens issues.
Here. I don't have citizens issues.
And we've got a nice pile. Have you seen the nice stack of of wood that we have?
Oh, yeah. I have a big nice pile too. I had to cut down a pile of trees.
Yeah.
I didn't cut them down.
Well, I'm waiting for Mother Nature to take care of mine.
Mine was sitting on the out.
All right, update on roads?
Not much to update. Uh the only thing is the phone call I received today regarding some rocks being pushed close to the main road and potential plowing. I don't know. I haven't seen them yet.
Glen, you take care of that?
This is at the green trailer.
I don't think they're in the ditch. I think there's a little bit of a ditch there. Don't think he pushed them out far enough to burn the ditch.
We get twelve inches of snow tomorrow, then that storm. They're gonna be gone eventually, you know, because you can't keep stacking snow off and have it. You can't plow on the edge of the hot top and keep it off the hot top once you start getting a series of storms.
And eventually you wind up.
Could mind building up.
I need to need to plow that stuff back to make room for more. If we have one of them, you know, when you start off with a foot of snow, second of December on a good sun, that's on the ground till April or March.
Uh let me know if I need to do something.
You have an email.
I've got an email today too.
Oh, we did?
Yeah.
I didn't see that.
It was later this afternoon.
I just forwarded it to you. It went to the general select board account from a neighbor who's feeling frustrated.
Okay, uh so.
I can just take a guess where this is. Not when you said the green trailer, I don't think it's that fine.
Okay, um we have widened Baker Road again a little bit, so it's not like a ninety-degree there. I I asked about that and he was very gracious and um.
It's uh, you know, he's exposing himself to a lot of liability because if somebody hits one of the rocks and they're in the state right away or the town right away, it's on him.
Yep.
It's not on anybody else but him.
Yep. Well, in the meantime, though, we don't want broken um piles because then we can't finish the road.
Right.
That needs to be done if if that happens.
Yeah, that wouldn't happen anywhere else.
Okay, I will look at the um the email later. Um that's what I get for coming in early, not paying attention to it. Any other road update?
No, no, just waiting for spring.
I I just.
I know.
I I was actually thinking that maybe with this early snow that maybe spring will come early. Do we have that kind of attitude?
No, just snow's coming early. It's not gonna go away.
I just, I want you to know that I went down um, you know, some of the lower end roads this weekend, and I'm always so impressed because they are so nice.
Yeah, and I got, that's all, you know, I wanna ditch these roads before we add gravel to the something to grade. I didn't ditch the lower end, of course, the dirt part of the lower end. Uh Baker's Road is gonna be ditched this year. So, you know, that's step one, then put some gravel on it, that's step two, and I did weave a bunch of money for gravel this spring because I didn't wanna gravel a couple of sections that are ready for it. Uh and I wanna finish Bay Shore Road, starting to kind of get back. You know, when things arise and are pressing, I have to, well, we can't upgrade, we gotta maintain.
Yeah. And I just realized, you're the road commissioner, and that's why you have a gravelly voice.
That and.
I'm sorry, it just hit me and I sorry, put a vote.
Yeah.
You know, when.
Maybe we should save it.
All right.
Then you'd be a smooth talker.
Yeah, yeah, well, I used to be.
All right, committee reports. Any update? Do you wanna talk, uh share anything about some of?
What would you like to know about?
Which one first?
I I was thinking about the town hall.
Oh, let's talk about the town hall. Okay, so um we are in the process of trying to get some grant money secured for the town hall. We've got two applications. One has already been submitted with a letter of interest. We haven't heard back yet whether we're going to be invited to apply for that one or not. The second one, um the application is due this Friday. We've done a significant amount of work with it. One of the challenges, as there are many with grants, but one of them was that they needed to have a licensed architectural drawing of the work that we wanna complete. And I took about eight addresses, email addresses off of the Maine Preservation's website and just blatantly cold-called with an email to these architectural firms, and we got two positive responses from people that came back to us. One of them, as it turns out, is a relative to the Hopkins family.
Oh, wow.
And then the other one doesn't have any personal connection to Westport, although uh she's a female. She has a lot of love of the of the coast, and she's very outdoorsy, and she was just really inspired, and she offered to do it at Dirt Chief, so um so we went with her. And as you heard a little earlier, the the initial draft of the diagram came back to my email tonight. I haven't seen it yet.
Everything's still to the wire.
I'm excited to get home and see it. Um but that was a challenge. We didn't even think we could get over, and we've got no.
That's great.
Um so that did require us, though, to go and peel off all of the tie bar one more time. And we took Chris Malley and I measurements of every single piece of wood, photos of everything, tape measures like up so that, and then did all these diagrams, sent them to this lady in New Hampshire, and she used all of those measurements to do her architectural draft from. So I, that's very exciting. Um and then we're hunting for money because this grant is a three-to-one match. If we, the more money we can get, um the more we can receive. So our next big challenge is that we had some money set aside that we thought was gonna be perfectly fine, and we've come to find out that it's not usable as the match. So we're now out with four days left scrounging to see where we can get some money to to do the actual grant match.
Yeah, and this is, I don't know, the if you guys remember, was it last year or the year before? We voted on one of the referendums was to raise ten million, I think, from from the state for for historic buildings, and that's what this is um the grant we're applying to. And apparently, it's gonna be once a year for three years.
Yes.
The opportunity to apply, so.
So this is our first. This will be the first round. Gay Wagner and Mary Ellen Barnes have put in opt-in bazillion hours already. Um the good news about that, though, is most of the information and the work that we've done for this piece, we can reuse for other grants, so.
Right, exactly. That's what happens when you start.
Yeah, so even if we don't get something this round.
Yeah.
So we can move forward.
Cause I look for more.
That's exciting. The other exciting thing is that on Wednesday evening at the History Committee and the Friends of Westport Island History Meeting, which will be at the right landing house, uh that will be under their new lease. They will have finally taken over, and that will now be off of our plates.
Unless something happens with the septic system or the.
Yep, and their their intention is to start, they're gonna use Gary Richardson for contractor to do the redo of the inside space, and he's gonna start first week of January. So that's funny.
And I know one of the things that um Gay's been working on, um she's been doing the research because they want to, you know, every year they have their big to-do, and they have it in different places, and they want to do it at the ferry landing this year. Um and she had asked whether it was okay, whether they closed down the ferry landing for those four or five hours. It's a public landing. So she's doing the research to find out whether we can legally close it down for hours. It's gonna be a Sunday afternoon in summer, and anybody wants to put their boat in or take it back out again. Um so she's um, last I saw, she was clarifying some questions or whatnot, but we don't know yet whether um that will happen or not, but um I appreciate the fact that she's going through and doing the research and.
Me too.
Yeah.
And it just keeps the hell off with all the other stuff.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, if if they approve that, then whatever needs to be done for those four hours, we just would make sure it's posted well in advance. Um but the question really is, is it legal to do that because it's a public landing? Um and even if we let everybody on Westport know what about others? So that's, she's doing that research, and I I appreciate her doing that because they're trying to make a decision already about where to meet, and they're hoping that that new place will be.
Be ready.
Yeah, yeah, so. All right.
Uh they have deadlines.
I know, yes, it does. Not that deadlines, yeah.
Grants, are there any grants where you get like two months' notice that, hey, you're gonna apply by this day? It always seems every time. Oh, you got less than a week to apply.
Yeah, I know. By the time I got about them sometimes.
Well, there is one at the very bottom here that talks about, uh there's a new grant opportunity that's gonna come in January. Um and it's the main public working waterfront infrastructure fund. Say that three times. Um do you know much about that, April? You sent it my way.
I I've been getting, seeing a lot of email with people seem very excited about it, and um it's essentially a main infrastructure grant for rebuilding uh working waterfront uh facilities, so things like boat houses. Or floats, which is what I was thinking of because I've been hearing us talk about the floats at ferry landing needing replacing at some point soon, so it seems like a really good fit for this grant. I think it's a new one, judging by how much it's being advertised.
It's um after the storm, damaged so many working waterfronts, this fund was created.
Uh I see.
So yeah, so my research also shows we could use it for floats. We could also, if we had any thoughts about anything else we wanted to do there that would enhance fisheries or wormers or clambers or any of their experience, if we wanted to put a wash station or a dump station or anything that could enhance that area, it could all come out of this grant money.
Cool.
I don't know. I don't have any of those ideas. I'm just saying. What we could do if somebody has a brilliant idea.
And what I'd like to put out is, is anybody a good grant writer?
You must have already in my mind because I was wondering if on the island there was somebody that was a grant writer.
There has to be.
There has to be a grant writer.
One of them just left.
Yeah, Gay, she's unbelievable. So she and Mary Ellen. When we started this process for the town hall, I'm like, uh, because I'm not a grant writer by any stretch.
Did you get AI together?
Well, we could, but.
They all look the same, though.
Our very first meeting, I thought, oh, my God, I got like, I'm gonna have so much to do here. Those two ladies are like phew, you know, I'm just, I'm just standing back going, okay. They're great. They know exactly how to do it, what to do.
Mary Ellen, especially with her cowling.
Yeah. Yeah.
But there will be plenty of grant writers unemployed as I said when April wrote the AI putting IT guys.
Yep.
Unemployment, the unemployment one, so.
Yeah, I wrote lots of grants for my old job, but I I could write them because I knew, I knew the material.
Yeah.
It was what my background was, and what do I know about the waterfront, you know?
Right, it's, yeah.
It it's so it's not as easy to to write a grant if if it's not material that um.
You're intimately familiar with.
Exactly.
That would be a good project for the harbor committee.
Yes, yeah.
Um how have we looked into that application, like how complicated it is? Because there's a big difference. Some grants are like, I just did one that was like two thousand characters, which is like very short. It was hard to make it that short. That's all they want. And then other ones are like, write a book.
Yeah, and I I have looked at that. It says it's coming out in January.
Yeah, if it's nice and short, we could probably do it in August, but if it's not, then.
Yep. But while we're here, even though it's way down here on the agenda, um do you wanna talk about the Reconnecting Communities Institute grant application that you just put out?
Sure. So um I've been talking to the DOT about pedestrian and bike safety um since we fielded a lot of complaints about that this spring and summer, both from drivers and walkers and bikers. Um and it's in our comprehensive plan. It's like a big priority. Everybody, we should, we had better um shoulders for walkers and bikers and little more wiggle room on Main Road. So I've been um talking to DOT, and I met with them this fall about that, and they were basically like, there's no way we're giving you paved shoulders. Forget about it. Um but I've been like poking around a little since then and like exploring different alternatives and possibilities. Um and one of the things I've been talking to DOT and Lincoln County Planning Commission about is some kind of in-between where you're not paving the shoulders, which might be a little much for us anyways, as a rural area. We don't really want a highway. It'd be really disruptive. Um but there's like compacted um just like better maintained shoulders, right? That's engraved it and put down some gravel and you have much better like even surface on either side of your road. Can we do that? Can we somehow get to that compromise? And DOT is like.
They're only per people who are passing on the either side because they got more room.
Oh, gosh.
Probably not. Like, if you paint the shoulders, it would, right? Because you, but if it's just still gravel, I don't think people are gonna wanna pull up to a gravel shoulder at fifty miles an hour, you know? I hope not, but you never know. Whatever knows.
Maintaining what they already have would be a good start.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, because, you know, you see Main Road, there's a, someone goes off. It's really soft because it's hasn't been built up in any way, makes a big rut, and we don't have jurisdiction to fix it, and they don't come fix it until like eight years later when they come back to pave again. And we all have to live with this like drop-off right on the edge of the road.
Hot top, and then water gets in it, yeah.
Yeah.
Multiplies it.
It's not good for their roads either.
Right, and you have places like across the road from Dawn Germans where there's a big calder and there is absolutely no shoulder.
Yep.
No place to ride a bike on the other side of the outside of the white line. And it's not a matter of dumping dirt out there because there's a calder there. So there's a lot of places like that too that are gonna be very difficult to address, but I'm all for it because like I say, I'd be happy with a little maintenance.
Yeah, yeah. So this grant came up all of a sudden. Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission was like, hey, uh here's this grant. It's great, but it was due like Friday. Um and it's basically a grant for like planning, and uh it's a federal um organization, and they will look at your situation and help engineer it and try to find the most cost-effective stuff, which Lincoln County Regional Planning Commission was like, and that might help encourage DOT to actually do it if you can cover some of these engineering planning costs. And if you do this and get a grant for all this planning, then it makes it easier to get another grant for actual implementation, maybe. Um so the grant itself, we're asking for, it's called aggregate shoulders, I think it's the word. Um and or maybe in addition, uh a grader, because some small towns have graders, which means we could maintain our own shoulders instead of waiting around for DOT to do it once every eight years. Um so that's kind of the ask. It's help us plan this, and we are interested in aggregate shoulders and or a grader.
Shoulder for period.
Shoulder, I mean, that's any old shoulders thing.
Yeah, there are so many places I know up in the northern part of the island where the white line is gone on the edge.
Yeah.
It's already been knocked off. So if you're on a bike.
Inside corners, oh, inside corners always get chewed out.
Yeah.
That's true.
There's a real issue. And if it isn't, if there's like no shoulder, then there's a hunt to ledge it. So you can't work, you gotta be in the traveling lane on a bicycle because like by Crosman's, like the field, they have the cemetery, chuck a ledge, you can ride a bike over there.
No, no. There are so many places there that I.
And it's a safety thing, you know? It's a main to safety thing because we get no speed enforcement, we get no maintenance on the shoulders. We're lucky at this point. I consider us lucky that there's been a catastrophe.
Especially if some people.
Yep.
Speed, that goes back to the enforcement thing that does little offended.
I guess that's the negative part of you doing such a good job with the roads.
Well, the only complaint I get when I fix a road is the speed people.
Yep, exactly, exactly. Feels too nice. There are no ruts. I can go.
I I, people must be able to give their money to these repair shops because all you got to do is sit out here and listen when people drive off the island. It's like, this is somebody that drives too fast on a dirt road right there because their cars are all rattles. You can pick them out.
Really?
And then you can get air in there, and you can sit on Post Office Road and watch the black car go by at fifty miles an hour. Oh, yeah, that's the guy of the crisis.
All right, I'm not happy. Thought we're gonna move on to select board business. And first thing that we have is the Animal Control Services Agreement that we have to do every single year. Uh originally, we had our own animal control officer and um and then over time, we discovered that we really needed to do this. Um and uh I was trying to look to see if there was a cost yet. We, last year, the past couple of years has been thirty-two hundred. I think that's what we committed to, but it hasn't cost that much. But anytime they come on the island for an issue or whatever, they send us the bill. So it's not like we give them the thirty-two hundred dollars. We um, we have that tucked away.
I think it's a amount of three hundred for the year.
Yeah.
And then it's like, I think it's twenty-five dollars an hour, but minimum two hours, so.
Yeah, and I was just trying to see if it was, if the updates are not.
But it is hourly.
Yep, yep.
The only chart changes from twenty-twenty-five are an increase in pay for the ACO and the effective and expiration dates of the contract. I haven't looked through it, but that's what the um.
Yeah, changing with the funding. Yep.
They didn't give you a price.
Not that I, not that I can see.
Did, but it's it's in the.
It's somewhere else.
The wording, and then you have to uh.
Well, I know in our.
There's a cost right here.
Oh, there it is, the cost, duh. Twenty-six dollars per hour.
Yeah, it was twenty-five-ish, I believe.
Yep, and.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed three hundred dollars. That I don't. And we pay by the hour. The town agrees to pay the cost of ACO's inoculations. I'm assuming that's for the animals. Um.
They have to get inoculated too. I think they have to get um rabies.
Ah.
Probably.
But not each town would pay that.
No.
They need one.
If they got bit by a dog here.
Then they would.
They'd have to get inoculated.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, I don't see anything that has.
Doesn't have a cap.
No, no, but.
There isn't one, I don't.
We had in our our budget for this past year was thirty-two hundred, so I'm assuming it's it's probably pretty close to that. So uh I'd like to move that we um accept this agreement between Lincoln County and the Town of Westport Island for their animal control services.
For twenty-twenty-six.
For twenty-twenty-six, starting January first. Do I have a second?
Same.
All in favor?
All right.
And.
And if you would sign both copies?
Yeah. I see there too. Um. Fine, yeah. I think it's this one, Town of Westport Island. Do you just need one? Is that enough?
Um I need you guys to sign both.
But all three of us?
Yeah, probably.
It's weird how they have it.
It's, if you're all here, might as well.
Might as well. Go ahead and sign under me, and and we'll pass it on to you.
No, Didi's texting me. It looks like the state offices are closing at noon tomorrow, which means we are supposed to close at noon tomorrow for our policy.
If school is closed, I thought our school is closed too.
Yeah, I think it's the state and the schools. But I imagine the school, well, the schools get out at two, so maybe they will, not sure.
Okay, um to care of that issue, the next issue is um we have uh somebody who's interested in joining our let me give our Conservation Commission, which is wonderful. And so I'd like to move that um we appoint Greg Gale uh to the Conservation Commission as associate member. Um do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
All right.
Don't know.
He's a nice guy.
Um so what's the uh um amount of people on that committee? Is it?
It's, I think, five voting members.
And then I think those unlimited.
And then unlimited associates.
Okay, so do you know how many?
How many we have?
The seats we have now?
We just got a couple new ones.
What?
Yeah.
We were scrambling to get people.
So I'm not, I'm not complaining at all. Yeah, I've been on that committee for years, and uh I'm so excited.
That's great.
With the new, um, new people we have.
It just makes me wonder now, you know, with with all our committees, and you met with them all at the beginning of the, well, I guess it was just the fall, but I'm just curious um if you're looking, is working on anything? Or had any um minutes from anybody, or not?
I've had minutes. Um and we have it as part of our town committee policy that you're gonna check in with them in January, I think.
Okay.
So, you know.
Yeah, it feels like that. It feels like that time is starting to come.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the committees that I'm on, I I feel really good about. I feel like there's been a lot of positive um energy there. So, all right, um speaking of town committees, we have an update on our policy again. I think April just likes to update. I think. But I'm excited because we didn't have any policies at all when I started, so.
Well, on this policy, every time a committee comes into existence or goes out of existence or changes in any way.
We have to change.
We have to change the policy because I list them in the appendix so that it's a little more like solid than in thin air in some minutes somewhere because we found it very hard to find that when you need it. So now it's, uh but it means that it gets amended like all the time.
But that means that it's up to date.
It's up to date.
On the website. Um so the new policy or the updated policy is changing uh the new Ad hoc Fire Station Committee um that is really doing research into what needs to be done there. And we're moving from five members to seven members, and they have definite terms. They're ending six thirty, twenty. And they have definite terms. They're ending six thirty twenty six, basically um. When you have the answer to what will happen over there, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Alright.
That still sounds, when we created this a few months ago, we talked about that. So they. If you look at their appointments, their terms end, I think, after, basically after town meeting. Because your goal is to have a solution, but so that still makes sense and it's so good, okay.
It's, it's a lofty goal.
It's a lofty goal.
Yes, we're writing lofty goals here.
Okay.
So I'd like to uh move that we accept the uh changes to the Westport Island town committee policies. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Right. And actually, before I do the next um piece, we actually, uh next on our agenda is to um.
Actually, a point?
Yes.
Yeah, I I was gonna do all these right here um to point all these, but I thought maybe you'd like to sort of. Give a little bit of um background about your your goal or whatever for these guys.
Okay, so our ad hoc committee for the fire station was created for the purpose of looking at different options. That we have with the challenge of the old fire station building, parts of it have been, I'll use the word condemned. It's not necessarily true, um but it's gonna be if we don't do something. No longer insurable. We have equipment, fire equipment in those bays that are no longer insurable, so therefore we're running a risk. Um, so there's some thoughts and ideas about what should happen and how much should happen. Um. So it's this committee's purpose to look at some of the options. And the options include, you know, tearing down part of the old building, keeping. Part that's structurally sound. Another option is to tear down a whole building and move location. Uh, maybe to the back of the property and put up a new structure. Those ideas going that might be even, is there a better location for the fire station to be built elsewhere in the town? And so we're very, very young in the process here and um. We've got people doing research on all different pieces and parts of that of. Um, so at this point, we're really just trying to come down to a place where we've got it narrowed down enough that we know. Where should we spend some money on actual engineering or architectural help? So we're not there yet. Like, we haven't, we haven't come to an agreement yet on exactly how many pieces and places and bits. Um, we should really look at. There's discussion of a fire station that takes us. Fifty years into the future. There's thoughts of why would we go that far out? Let's keep it at twenty five years. Because who knows, maybe by then we're gonna have all firefighting drones and we don't have a need a fire station. Um. There's also thoughts of should we incorporate a community center, community space. In this structure or attached to that structure, or should we combine this building with a community structure? And when I say community, I mean, a room, a big enough room, people could have meetings, we could have handicap accessible bathrooms. It could be used as warming and cooling centers and emergency shelters. And we have to make these decisions about how much of this do we want? And is this the right time and place to add it into this project or not? So those are the discussions going on at this point.
And you just had your first sort of a informal um field trip?
Yeah, we had a field trip where the members all got to go and look at the fire station and see it. Uh, Stacy Hutchinson is on the group. He has already developed some CAD drawings with the fire station guys. Fire department members already. So he presented some of those thoughts and. Um, that kind of gives people an idea of, you know, what are they thinking in terms of fire and EMS service? It's hard to know out into the future what our population is gonna be, but. Um, I think we can all assume that it's gonna continue to increase as it has been recently. Um, so some of those thoughts come into play as well as, you know, what are the needs gonna be? What are the population gonna be? How old are we gonna be?
Has any thoughts been given to regionalization in this program? Because twenty five years old, I don't see. Single fire departments being, I see them being a thing of the past. And has that even been mentioned over there?
Oh, yeah. So that discussion came up and the the value of that is pretty high. Because we do believe that there's gonna be some of that. In all of the scenarios that were presented about regionalization, there was still the need for individual. Equipment stations to be located in the different towns that may be serviced by full-time crews. So we would still have some responsibility to house equipment.
Absolutely, but is the scale of the building, has that had any factor on the scale of the building? This is Westport Island.
Yep.
Everybody needs to keep that in mind.
It, this is all, we're still in the very early stages of something. So, yeah, so honestly, nobody really knows. What are we gonna need twenty five years from now? Again, it might be just firefighting drones. There might not be a need for any humans to do any firefighting. We don't know this.
I don't know who thinks it's okay to tear down two thirty-year-old buildings just to build a new one. I didn't think Westport had that kind of money. Maybe I'm wrong.
I think you have a strong opinion about that.
I do, because I don't see any logic in tearing down.
So.
Two thirty-five-year-old buildings.
What two buildings are you talking about?
This one and the big part of the fire station.
I don't think anybody intends on tearing this building down for any reason.
Said combining the two. I would assume you would combine the two by tearing both of them down.
I know. I'm sorry if that's what you understood. It would be perhaps connecting this building to that building with a piece in between.
Make a corridor or something, yeah.
So if we were able to keep the two big bays, which are the salvageable end.
Right.
And come this direction, we could potentially put fire station, fire station, even fire station, and then a community room. And connect it to this building and it could all be one complex. It's again, just a thought.
I'm just checking to see what direction this is headed in, that's all.
It's really not yet. We're just throwing everything out there because I think we have to because ultimately, it's the, it's the, it's the legislature's decision. It's the people's decision. We just wanna bring to them the most, you know, logical and choices, not just, this is what we're gonna do. Yeah, we have to have.
Right, you gotta.
Yes, yes. That is ultimately what we want to do.
Bottom line is the price tag.
Yeah, yeah. I know, I know.
And that's why you, I I know you've thought long and hard about who you wanted on this committee. Um, so yeah, there are fire, fire.
And they come back to what, what they need.
But but there are others on there too. Do you wanna mention why you picked some of these?
Yeah, I tried to find people first, people that are reasonably intelligent, that can have conversations without taking anything personal. So that we can have hard conversations because that's what we need to have. Um, people that have knowledge and skills. So we've got people that are electrical engineers or we've got people that may have had some business in the past. We have firefighters that are current firefighters that are old. We've got past select board members on the committee. So I think we have a pretty well-rounded. Group of people. We've got people that are old-time islanders that have been here forever and ever. Um, hopefully they have a connection to the old-time islanders. And we've got people that are relatively new, like in the last twenty years. Uh, we've got one that's a longtime family on the island, but he, it's he, he didn't live here. Until the last ten years. But there's, now everybody has a fairly ingrained interest in making sure it gets done well and right and. As Jimmy pointed out, in scale.
I know fire stations that have been built in other towns that are grossly. Overpriced and way more than what was needed. And that tends sometimes to be the case and I'm watching out for the taxpayer.
And that's what, when uh we talked to um the fellow that came from Senator Collins's office. He was really clear that do not, he said, I will know if you're just, you know, spending, you know, the biggest, the best, the brightest. When you really don't need it. Um, and he said, I will pick those out immediately and they won't be funded.
And we need a fire department. I'm not saying we don't. It's just gonna fit the island and it's gonna be some logic and common sense. Put into this whole process.
Yep.
And Kim fits the bill on that, so.
Yeah, no.
Well, when you come to a consensus of what you think, when you gather all this information, is it gonna go out to a vote for all the islanders?
My hope, thanks for asking that. Our hope is that we are by June able to present to the townspeople. Like perhaps two choices or maybe three choices, whatever we get it narrowed down to, like the the best three options, let's say.
Okay.
And so then, and in the meantime though, I mean, I've pretty much instructed the people on the committee to get out and talk to folks. We wanna know even now. We wanna hear.
Right.
The opinions. Because if we get ninety percent of the townsfolk saying, well, this is the way it should go, then we don't need to waste our time and money on. Engineering this over here. Like, let's get out of it now. So, so we're really trying to have involvement and have people.
Right.
Express opinions and then it will, it will be by town vote. It isn't gonna be. It's not, it's not gonna be our decision.
So, I guess my understanding, somebody's mentioned there's gonna be a community building built down at Ferry Landing. Is that what? Is that what I'm hearing?
When that, so that's a different thing.
Because.
No, because then I was wondering, would you really need to add a community room here? Well, that one would, the one at the um Ferry Landing is not gonna be that big, cause it's just gonna be another room inside that little ranch.
Ah.
House. It's just like. It's like people can come and just play, you know, use it for, you know, a craft group or something like.
Oh, okay.
So like a room like this.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, probably about the same size. Yeah, you've been in the, the.
Yeah, yeah.
Imagine the kitchen being gone and the wall that's right there. That's it.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. It's our brand-new building.
In the long-term plan down at the Ferry Landing, the Friends of Westport Island History did propose that there's an addition put on. But that's years down the road. That's not anything that they think they're gonna get to soon. Um, and that space would be a larger space that can house some community, but it's not gonna be, again, it's not gonna be as big as the town hall. Or if we do something now with this fire station rebrand, it's not gonna be as big so that everybody could fit in it.
Awesome.
That's the challenge, you know? And the the other option we have as we move forward is we could just totally ignore. Putting on any community room or building with the fire station. We could just do a fire station. And pour a ton more money into the town hall that we have and upgrade heating and cooling and water and attach a handicap bathroom on it. Or put a handicap bathroom in it or, so that's another option. Is, do we separate them? Do we put them together? It's a, it seemed to be a better sell to the townspeople. If we incorporate fire stations slash community purpose.
Well, I like the idea of of a warming center and stuff too. I, and I don't know how many people would avail of, avail themselves of that.
Exactly. So those are, there's so many options right now that we're really just like deer on headlights. What's the right thing to do?
And we know no matter what we do, we're gonna hear. Yep. So who are these people that uh we'd like to appoint to this committee? Uh, and I'm just gonna. Name them all out and and hopefully we can approve it and then um we can assign. So the following people are um have been uh invited to this committee and I'd like to make a motion that we appoint. Uh, Richard Lornson, Brian Mackey. Jason Abbott. Bryant, Gary Weber. And Ashley Murray. And, oh, yeah, they're not in here for somebody that's Stacy Hutchinson.
They've, Stacy was already appointed.
Okay, and Rich Coventry. You have two for Gary We- Weber.
No, maybe I missed Rich.
Yeah, do you want me to just scratch his name up?
Uh, yeah, well, I'll redo it. If you guys make the appointment now verbally, then I can drop the paperwork if you decide at your workshop.
Okay. Okay. So those are the members that um we're interested in appointing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Alright, um, other than that, um, we have to sign all those. Any announcements or anything else? April, anything that um? One of the things that we will do eventually, I think this is a a a good idea for the community to know about. We are always looking for grants and often writing them. And I don't think, you know, especially when we're told no. Um, like one time I know um Jim and I wrote one. Um, we didn't get approved. But, and I'm hoping another one will come out. But um, you know, to, for the town to know how often we do apply for grants. And sometimes they're very small grants and sometimes they're bigger grants, but we do a lot of times um look for grants. Uh, it's a way to save money for the town. Um, but if if we don't get the grant and you don't see that, you only see that, oh. You know, they're just using the town money, but we we are always looking for grants. So and um, I know April's always sending things our way, so. Uh, if you know anybody that's a great grant writer, send them our way. Um, so if there aren't any um. Any other announcements, then I'd like to make a motion that we, and for tonight, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
And April, you'll close that down?
Good night, ladies.
Good night, John Boy.